Counselor Tate.
Here.
Demus.
Here.
Savage.
Here.
Blata.
Here.
Dadi. West.
Here.
Alter.
Here.
Windor. Maricomo.
Here. Oh, county. Forward with. Um. For best. Um. Council First Order of Entertaining Motion. Advise the gen you have before you hear tonight.
So moved.
Do you have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
Second. Call all in favor to say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We're going to get right into our bill. Um. We have three bids. The first bid.
Your honor.
Oh, I'm. Excited. Bids. Uh, council, we need a motion to approve the minutes from city council from February.
So moved, your honor.
Have a second?
Second.
Seconds we can call all in favor to say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, now. Housing for first bid. Century Square Roof. Like we have four bidder. First bid. Valley. Four there. We do have a bid bonded at. Total bid. Fifty-six thousand. Two-hundred-and-fifty-three dollars and six. Fifty-six thousand five. Okay, second bidder we have. Clinical Solutions. A bid bonded at. Total bid. Fifty-eight thousand nine hundred dollars. Thousand nine. Cover your mouth, watch. Twenty-second. It'll. Can hear some. Um. Okay, third one. Last. Bid bond. Total bid. Ninety-one thousand two seventy-seven. Ninety-one thousand seven. Okay, fourth bid. Have quality builders Wyoming. Do have a bid bond at. Total bid. Fifty-nine thousand hundred dollars. Fifty thousand. Second item. Sir, bid open. Rock Springs Water Department vehicle. Bitter. Be. Sprat Bar Motors. Cheyenne. One on. Ball. Next. Bonded at. Bid vehicle. Forty-seven thousand seven hundred dollars. Forty-seven thousand seven five. Second bid Fremont Motors, Rock Springs, Wyoming. Bid bonded tax. Total bid. Forty-eight thousand twenty-four. Forty-eight thousand one hundred and forty. Third. Bid. Hunt Motors. At. Full bid. Forty-eight thousand eight-eight-seven. Twenty. Forty-eight thousand seven. A fourth bidder Hunt Motors. Pass Wyoming. No bid bond. Open it. Okay, this is. On. Sale of property open based on. See. Discussion. So, fresh. So. What? We do have a couple of appoint appointments. Uh. Item number one, Mr. President. Councilperson. Justin Lemon. Service first term. Happy.
So moved, Mr. President.
Second.
Second.
Oh.
Counselor Demus.
Yes.
Savage.
Yes.
Blata.
Yes.
Dadi.
Yes.
Yes.
Alter. Tate.
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the council. Item number two, Mr. President, members of the council, I submit the name of Zoann Henderson to serve first term in the Rock Springs Historic Board.
Counselor, yep. Second. Go call. Counselor Savage.
Yes.
Blata.
Yes.
Dadi.
Yes.
West.
Yes.
Alter.
Yes.
Tate. Demus.
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the council. Springs Historic presentation. We're honored tonight. With all the. News and hype about COVID night, coronavirus not going around. F. Ken Landberger, the director, Carla Roy, Public Health Response Coordinator for the Sweetwater County Public Health Department. Through the next. We, um, we all want to hear what we should be doing, what, um, what, uh, direction the city leader should take. What communication to add with airport, the hospital. Give us an update. Two questions. Afraid of. Not be afraid of. We don't want to overreact, but we don't want to underreact.
Just.
Of course. Question. Go ahead.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and counselors.
Uh.
Not bad.
There's a green light.
And, uh, also with us this evening is Judy Rodrick. Uh, she is Sweetwater County Emergency Manager. So first this evening, um, I would like to give you some update, uh, numbers worldwide. And also the numbers for the United States and then for, uh, the state of Wyoming. The numbers are changing rapidly over the last couple of days, but as of four fifteen this evening, there are ninety-two thousand eight hundred and eighteen cases of COVID nineteen globally. Three thousand one hundred and fifty-nine deaths. But the total recovered are forty-eight thousand two hundred and one. As of that time, uh, in the United States, we do have a hundred and eighteen active cases. And there were seven total deaths. And we have had eight recovered. Um, there are currently absolutely no cases of COVID nineteen in the state of Wyoming at this time. The Wyoming Department of Health and the local public health offices, um, we are monitoring all travelers returning to Wyoming from China, Iran, Italy, Japan, and South Korea. Upon arrival into the United States, when they, um, are, uh, when they're getting off the plane, their temperatures are checked. If everything is okay, they are given a card that states they give the symptoms. If you're having any, uh, a high temp cough or shortness of breath, that they're supposed to get in touch with the local public health offices immediately. And then if, uh, they become acutely ill quickly, then they are to notify the emergency room or their healthcare provider before, um, going to those, to those places. The state of Wyoming Department of Health is working very closely with the Center for Disease in, um, monitoring, following, um, any, any of the travelers as such. Uh, we also are keeping up to date on current guidelines through the Center for Disease, uh, that they put out and they, um, uh, anything that's updated, uh, they do let us know. Uh, and you can reach or look at all those guidelines yourselves at cdc.gov. But, uh, Wyoming Department of Health and the Preparedness Unit that I work under, um, also work very closely with Office of Homeland Security, which is, um, where Judy and I, um, share our information, uh, accordingly with that. Your local public health office, your hospital, your ho- um, physicians, we keep them informed of all the current guidelines that need to be, uh, followed, uh, in case we do have a positive COVID nineteen patient. Um, things to look out for, um, who they need to notify, which is us, uh, and the Wyoming Department of Health, like as, as soon as even a suspected case. We, we offer some, our advice to the city of Rock Springs and businesses in the area is to make sure that you have your own pandemic plan. And that would include, um, everything from absenteeism at work, um, janitorial, how, how the buildings are cleaned, um, as such. Um, but the, the. It's normal things that you should take care of that we should already be doing. If that, um, helps at all, I mean, with the regu- I shouldn't say regular, with the seasonal flu, you would do the same precautions with that. Um, you know, any? Other?
So, I have one question. Can tell me just a little bit? Cause there's a lot of talk about the coronavirus. Realistically, there's far more deaths associated. Who?
The seasonal flu, correct.
Right? And so if an individual flying, saying. Future airport. Wherever.
Mm-hmm.
Coming through airports, check.
They would probably be checked at Denver International if they were flying directly into Rock Springs.
That point, there's. There's no, nothing in our airport that would capture that individual as a. Cars. Have.
Unless they, unless they became ill between Denver and Rock Springs. I mean, uh, there's nothing handed out here. All that is handed out at the international airports. All that information is giving to the, um, passengers as they disembark.
Denver, Salt Lake, from Nashville. Was that?
Nope. Correct.
Question. Counselor, question? Counselor Blata.
Okay. CDC did release as of yesterday that the states can do their own testing, that all of the testing does not have to be done at the Center for Disease. So the kits were dispensed to the states, each one of the, each one of the states. Wyoming did receive theirs. They were doing, um, the state health lab was doing their, um, quality issue, yeah, quality QC, quality controls on the, on the kits to make sure that they're ready to go. They were sup- they are to be completing that, um, late yesterday as such. And then those, um, for right now are still being, the testing will be done at the Wyoming Department of Health Lab, but they are working on possibly distributing those to the individual hospitals. But currently, right now, that's all done at the Cheyenne Wyoming Department of Health Lab.
So.
Yeah.
I, I wouldn't want to say yes or no on that because that would, the hospital's realm deserves, like, health's realm on.
I've rated the thing for the day.
Yes.
Able space. Should, should that hurt?
And we do work very closely with the hospital. Um, uh, I attend quite a few meetings with them and discuss our plans, their plans, and how they do intertwine.
Forward. State.
Yes, yes.
Jake, so. Forward. Beat tap or whatever.
Yeah. And keep your hands away from your face.
Keep your, with.
And if you're sick, stay home.
Okay. But we, you know.
I think too, it's important to have, like, continued operation plan, so, um, if you have, um, employees, like fire department or something that responds to, say, the nursing. As cases and they transport individuals and they are positive now of who worked with it. Been exposed and then they will be born. So if you have thirty firefighters and you had twelve that responded, now how half of your staff to be able to work with? So how are you getting? Other. That, so those are things about making sure that people that are sick, it's not punitive. So. Make note to come back to work proving that they're sick. Just, um, feel wait. The rest of first. So they don't.
And I have given, um, your, uh, fire department, Green River Fire, uh, EMS, um, both Rock Springs, Green River, uh, Wamsetter, Farson, information on, um, the CDC's, uh, measures for transport of patients. So they, they do have that information.
You know, there's a lot of discussion. Um. Saw an article way back. Couple. All broke. Of course, our stocks are going toilet, um, because coronavirus being stocked up. That mask, but with, with the guy was actually saying. Quit, quit purchasing that. Cause realistically, they do.
That is correct.
So a common surgical mask that you see a lot of those pictures that people are making, those are, if you are having symptoms, those keep the symptoms contained to you, but they will do nothing to protect you from. From someone who is COVID nineteen. An N-ninety-five mask, which is actually fit tested, Carla is able to do fit testing, um, for those N-ninety-five masks. Those are for healthcare workers who are responding. Who are sick to protect the healthcare worker. So masks don't do the, um, public any good and, um, the N-ninety-five masks, you only wear them for a couple hours. Or, um, they. So that's kind of the masks is they're not.
And the different levels.
Right.
Different levels.
Yeah.
It's amazing. Just the way that it's transported. Watching. China with. So there were. Twenty, thirty peoples. Uh, raining. All have. Wait, last one. What? That's. Better. Didn't gather the bus by flash. People were just freaking out, right? But, um, yeah, there's just a, um, hysteria. Let's see. Um, how many cases? Definitely.
Prepared.
Think that's just common knowledge. Oral, hostile, um. I. Care. Play. True. Not quite. Are. Over. So. But. Any? Five two.
And if there's any questions whatsoever, if you think of something, once you go home or down the road, whenever, call us. We'll be more than happy, more than happy to, uh, if we don't know the answer, we'll find it out for you.
Counselor, Counselor Savage?
I have. So you said there was ninety-two thousand. How did they verify? But.
This is globally and, and these, and I also need to tell you that those are in hospital, actual hospital patients. So the number is more, it's higher, it's higher. These are just the number that have been admitted to the hospital.
Why would you go to the?
Uh, with the, when the pneumonia sets in, this particular COVID nineteen attacks the lungs. So the, they will develop pneumonia. Yeah.
How to work?
So the, the numbers that I presented earlier were actually hospital patients, and yes, they were tested in, in their respective countries.
They have tested.
The same, the same, they were tested here. I'm sorry.
They have tested. How do, how do you have, how do you?
They did have the, uh, at the, uh, in China, they did have, um, the test kits. But they were lim, limited to that area. And then as, as it went, then the test kits became more available as such. And, and also for, I'm, I'm sorry, also for diagnostic. Um, uh, they, if they became negative with the nasal swabs, throat swabs and lung for, um, influenza A, influenza B. Uh, as such. Bad lungs on the X-ray. Diagnostic that way too.
I was gonna say that they, there's the ability to collect the specimens, um, with even at the hospital right now has the ability to collect the specimens, but the capability to test is not at the Wyoming Department of Health. So those would all be going to CDC. We, we can collect specimens and ship them, but the test kits are homemade so that they're.
What is that? Burg?
Disinfectant. Um, there are, uh, disinfectants that kill different bacteria, viruses, th, that type of thing, yeah. And most, um, institutions, uh, uh, janitorial cleaning people, the, the product that they use even now, uh, will kill, will kill viruses.
I don't think there's, I haven't seen anything as of this afternoon of a kid being positive. So, um, if they're getting sick, they're not being, they're not getting sick enough that they're being tested. So I haven't seen any positives in child. I don't know if you guys heard it twice, but it is, it is the. There was one that did have. But it, it is mainly affecting elderly individuals and those with other comorbidities that have other underlying conditions that are causing those problems.
Their immune system.
Yeah.
Responsible.
Yes, yes.
We did.
This is a do not panic, do be prepared, but we're not panicking.
What about, I mean, what are the United States and? Vaccine? Seems like we fill out vaccine. They're in a, in a couple of months.
They're, they're thinking a year. Um, the process for vaccine is to identify the virus and then the scientists figure out the, the molecular structure of it. Then they use and try different kinds of medications chemistry wise to see what permeates the actual cell, the, or of the virus. And then they have to figure out what works, what doesn't. It, was it a fluke that it just killed at this time? Does it, it, then they have to figure out, does it harm any other, um, cells, um, that would be in the body? Then that has to go through so many trials to figure. And then they do a people trial. Th, that has, you have to have so much information and a, a number to see, does it really work, does it not work? Then they can go in, we're gonna say it does, and then it goes into production. So it's, it's quite a process.
Know some of the, uh, that, um, food, actually, to.
Vir, viruses will mutate and so they change, they change on ya. So you can prepare it and then by golly, they switch.
They're smart.
And they're, they're different. And so when they prepare the vaccines, a lot of them, they're, um, guessing which strains, cause you have influenza A strains, you have influenza B strains. With an influenza A strain, that's where you get all those H1N1s, H5N2s, H3N2s. And so they're guessing which of those Hs and Ns circulate. And then they get it, you know, figured out what they think is gonna work and the little boogers change. And so, so that's what makes them somewhat less effective is that they, they are constantly mutating.
Some of the battle also that nobody regarded what the structure was, where it was.
Correct.
And plan. Correct. First individuals. Brought this to the forefront, doctor. Fire. That every. Certain diligence. Food market. Good information. Fred, um, Fred Monerens gave me colleagues here today. Yeah, well, we, um, like I said, I don't wanna overreact because I think that does take place. Stocks going, that'd be awesome. There. Find this out. Assistant.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
You gotta come down to the mic though, yeah. Please do.
I'm Mr. Mayor, City Council. Um, first of all, I really do officially wanna thank you for having this. And when I heard the, uh, you know, the concern from the citizens, I wanted to make sure that, you know, that I was aware of what you were doing. So thank you for having this meeting and being a re, you know, a employer with a lot of employees. Uh, it's important that I can tell my folks what you guys are doing and preparing. And I understand Green River is doing something as well tonight, so thank you. Um, the expansion, we're, uh, well, we just had an update this morning. We actually have a dry mix plant up and running onsite. And, uh, also from Green River and Rock Springs, we have, uh, trucks that are gonna be starting Monday to do the pours for the foundations. Um, it's huge. We've got, I think Wyoming's biggest swimming pool right now. It's about two hundred by three hundred by eight feet deep. Foundations will be five foot thick and it's going very, very well. We're, uh, we're way on track and we monitor it. We do have equipment coming from all over the world, so our biggest concern is deliveries. And, uh, as you were talking, uh, Mayor, the, you know, the global imp, economy impacts us, but right now we're two weeks ahead of time. We're feeling very good.
It's exciting.
Thank you.
Appreciate the update and, uh, look forward to, uh, the progress and forward.
Thanks for asking.
Okay, we're gonna move on to, uh, just continue with the petition, sorry. However. We're trying to do so. Um, hearing that, I would just like to say also, um, speaking with individuals with the Joint Powers Water Board, question came up with the highway closed all the time. Um, which I believe now that I saw in the last several, the highways, Rock Springs, closed for couple of months. One horrendous, um, wrecked, um, the other day with about a hundred and forty vehicles, four lost, five. Killed those families, officials were part of that, Rock Springs. But the question was brought up, um, just, uh, how long our water reserves would last if we couldn't chlorine it for treatment? I thought that was. We have some large water to, um, the city of Rock, Joint Powers Water Board, Board stores, uh, a large amount of chlorine to treat those, uh, those, uh, facilities and tanks and water that serves our community. But, um, realistically, if we, um, couldn't receive any, um, chlorine shipments, uh, for quite some time, it'd operate, um, about a month, a month and a half. With, uh, the amount of water that we have in our tanks and the chlorine we have on site. And of course, immediately if we knew there was a water restriction, uh, deal with it that way. But that, uh, that's a good question. Something to be, should be aware of. Water, food, a lot of grocery stores that they ship. By closing highways down. Impact on community of people. Keep that in mind. Highways open as fast as possible. Hopefully, it's been a very long, seems like a long road closure. Hopefully, we're on. That, I'm going to, um, close the petition section. And move on to our council committee and board reports. Uh, we have six items. Item number one, Joint Powers Telecommunication Board meeting, February second, twenty. Two, the Joint Powers Combined Communication Board meeting, January seventh, twenty. Three, the Parks and Recreation Board meeting, it's January ninth, twenty twenty. Four, the Main Street Board meeting, and it's February tenth, twenty twenty. Five, the specific purpose tax revised priority last request discussion, which I'm going to turn over to West.
Thank you, Your Honor. I'm sure you guys are getting tired of my report, but I do have a little news to share today for one. So I did attend the Board of County Commissioners meeting this morning. They had the six cent on their agenda for discussion in regards to where we're going from here and how to move forward. As you all know, we requested the additional three hundred and sixty thousand dollars to make us whole on both our city core projects as well as the two remaining, um, sponsorships. That was approved today, four to zero, with one commissioner being absent. So we are moving forward with that addition, three hundred and sixty thousand. Both sponsorship representatives are very thankful and pass along to each of you their appreciation for our continued support, fighting to keep them, so they can strive to try and find funding elsewhere. So that was good news. Um, moving forward, it's gonna be a matter of determining how to place all these projects on the ballot as well as bonding out of that. Commissioner Shaneville is planning to set up a workshop for all municipalities or other entities out there. The end of this month, something she's got a couple issues for some date, it's undetermined at the point. She's also, I believe, on their next meeting, scheduling a time to discuss bonding. Selected, signed, they are getting contracts for the underwriting efforts on the project. About all I have for you, other than, uh, some discussion did, get brought up in regards to the bonding, whether or not all the municipalities want the projects full. About a month ago, commissioners took the stance that they would just go ahead and bond the full amount. Today, it seemed like they might be back. Municipalities asking, well, projects in full or not. You know, we did take a vote a while back, decided we couldn't necessarily all of our projects. Probably some, some discussion we have, did reach out to both of our sponsorships and they would refer to bond their projects right away. So outside of that, just whether we wanna revisit that vote or determine which of our core projects place these projects on the ballot.
A discussion. I, uh, I still feel infrastructure projects on our best. Well worth them, part of. Few of these projects, the, the work, the promotion by these folks. Already started. Our time, small one, opportunity, destruction, I support. Councilman West, I appreciate the, um, the work you do for us. Proposition here, the condition, three hundred and sixty thousand dollars for our sponsorship and, um, look forward to some decisions here. Item number six, work for Town Hall Meeting, March eleventh, twenty twenty, at Broadway Theater. Councilman Tate, Tate, West?
So yeah, uh, Councilor Tate and I are gonna co-host a Town Hall event week from tomorrow, which will be next Wednesday, March eleventh, main lobby of Broadway Theater from five thirty to seven PM. Some advertisements going, probably the city for their website and Facebook, but essentially it's, it's an opportunity for Matt sending out constituents list and preparing for the upcoming budgets, maybe to back constituents' burden to see if it was for improvement. That might be, I'd like to see accomplished in the next year. Yeah, then Wednesday.
I think that's a great idea. Passion out budgets and, um, some back for rewards bars. Thank you. One, uh, other item I should add. Not so clammy. Is, did receive sales tax. The recent check I received for January twenty twenty. Thirty-eight percent lower than we received in March two thousand. It, it's a slap in the face and let's hope this trend doesn't continue, but we're, it's to negotiate contracts for unions and budgeting. Just hope this, yeah, this path, that leaves us about twenty percent last year. Basically, um, we're eight percent compared to last year in March, we're down twenty percent from last month. About percent ahead of projections. Cause it could work, does conservative, um, let's just hope this isn't. This was hard to digest today. Sure you see that? Will be as you feel. With that, um.
Probably keep our council initiative request pretty low then.
This is what I'm, what I'm saying is, I'm not quite sure what your constituency is, is going to, uh, request. But if there's a request to put a dome over at the city of Rock Springs due to the wind, that would forego that cost at this point. But if there's a request to put a dome over at the City of Rock Springs due to the wind, that would forego that cost at this point. Uh, uh, hearing that, councilors, I'd entertain a motion, a motion to approve all the council committee and board reports placed on file. Uh, we do have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second's called. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
You're working. Uh, just gonna move us on to correspondence, councilors. If the last, um, buddy had any questions as you can to, uh, correspondence, uh. Put motion to correspondence placed on file.
So move your.
Have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second's called. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? For the confusing part of our agenda. Moving to the bills and claims, item number one. I'd entertain a motion to, uh, approve the bills and claims from March third, twenty twenty. We do have a motion. Do we have a second? Second's called. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Stand.
Councilors, I'd also entertain a motion to approve the salaries for February twenty first, twenty twenty. Have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second's called. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Councilman. Proud. Um, moving on to the new business items of our agenda, councilor, we have item number one, request from fire department for permission to bid. The renovation of headquarters, fire station, showers and restroom project. What's your, what's your pleasure?
Honor.
Councilman Tate? Do you have a motion to honor this request? Do we have a second?
Second.
Second. Has been called. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item number two, the request from the finance department for permission to apply for the two thousand twenty state homeland security grant to purchase and install security door system. What's your pleasure? Councilman Shalata? Motion to approve this request. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second's called. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Number three, the request from Rock Springs Liquor Association for all night dates. What's your pleasure? Shalata? Do we have a motion to honor this request? Do we have a second?
Second.
Second's been called. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item number four, the request from BlackRock Incorporated for a liquor catering permit for the Jenkins Pool Tournament on April eighth, two thousand twenty, from eight AM to midnight at the. What's your pleasure?
Honor.
Councilman Shalata? Motion to honor this request. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second's been called. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And item number five, the request from BlackRock Incorporated for a liquor catering permit for the Miller graduation party on May thirtieth, twenty twenty, from five PM to midnight at the Bunny Hall. What's your pleasure? Shalata?
This.
This is work. Do you have a motion to approve? Do we have a second?
Second.
Second's called. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, we're gonna move on to our resolutions. Councilor's item number one, resolution two thousand twenty dash.
A resolution accepting and approving, mode of understanding, City of Rock Springs and stu- studio theater C C P A, or at C C P A. And authorizing. A. Aaron Matthew. Burn in the city. Said. After the city of Rock Springs.
Councilors, what's your pleasure? Councilman Zardi? Do we have a motion to approve resolution twenty twenty dash two six? Do we have a second?
Second.
Second's called. Roll call.
Councilor Shalata?
Yes.
West?
Yes.
Alter? Tate?
Yes.
Demus?
Yes.
Savage?
I had a question. Is this gonna be actually gonna perform at? Is that right?
Yes.
I never heard that before.
Miracle.
Yes. Item number two, resolution two thousand twenty dash two seven.
A resolution approving the Sweet Water County Local Government. These emergency operations. Raising. Perfect. After the city.
Councilors, what's your pleasure? Councilman Shalata?
Res. Seven.
We do have a motion to approve. Resolution two thousand twenty dash seven. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second's been called. All in favor, whoops.
There's Zardi? West?
Yes.
Alter? Tate?
Yes.
Yes.
Savage?
Yes.
Shalata?
Yes.
Eric.
Yes. Item number three, resolution two thousand dash two eight.
A resolution accepting and approving. Did ASO. Time change. Prostate shield. Effective first. Authorizing direct. Gay coma. Of the city of Rock. Set of ASO. See.
Councilor, what's your pleasure?
Your Honor.
Councilman Savage?
I move to approve resolution twenty twenty dash twenty eight.
We do have a motion to approve resolution two thousand twenty dash two eight. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second's been called. Roll call.
Councilor West?
Yes.
Alter? Tate?
Yes.
Yes.
Savage?
Yes.
Shalata?
Yes.
Zardi? Eric.
Yes. Item number four, resolution two thousand twenty dash two nine.
A resolution accepting. Business ready. Ground. Well, business. City of Rock Springs. Gay coma was. City of Rock. Said. Rocket.
Councilors, what's your pleasure?
Your Honor.
Councilman West?
Move to approve resolution twenty twenty dash twenty nine.
Do we have a motion to approve resolution twenty twenty dash two nine? Do we have a second?
Second.
Second's been called. Roll call.
Councilor Halter? Tate? Yes.
Yes.
Savage?
Yes.
Shalata?
Yes.
Zardi? West?
Yes.
Eric.
Yes. Very excited. Item number five, resolution two thousand twenty dash three zero.
A resolution accepting and approving standard form of agreement. Current architect Myers Anderson. L L C persecute. Thank. Ability. Case. Authorizing. Gay coma. Of the city of Rock. Matthew Elmer. City. Rock. Execued, said agree. Company. Rock.
Councilors, what's your pleasure?
Your Honor.
Councilman West?
Move to approve resolution twenty twenty dash thirty.
Have a motion to approve resolution two thousand twenty dash three zero. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second's been called. Roll call.
Councilor Tate? Yes. Demus?
Yes.
Savage?
Yes.
Shalata?
Yes.
Zardi? West?
Yes.
Alter? Eric.
Yes. Item six, resolution two thousand twenty dash three one.
A resolution authorizing direct. Gay coma was mayor of the city of Rock Springs. Matthew Feldner burn in the city clerk of the city of Rock. Accepting. Budget. Budget.
Councilors, what's your pleasure?
Your Honor.
Councilman Savage?
Move to approve resolution twenty twenty dash thirty one.
We do have a motion to approve resolution two thousand twenty dash three one. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second's been called. Roll call.
Councilor Demus?
Yes.
Savage?
Yes.
Shalata?
Yes.
Zardi? West?
Yes.
Alter? Tate?
Yes.
Eric.
Yes. Councilor's gonna take us to our ordinance section of our agenda, which we have one on first reading ordinance two thousand twenty dash zero three.
In ordinance amending Article seventy-one, the ordinance of the city of Rock Springs. Title of Rock Springs for management.
And with no further business to come before the city council, this meeting adjourned.